So he did test fit for me. A guy contacted him to do a septic design in Plymouth.
Plymouth?
Yeah, and I got involved with the subdivision.
Then he won't, then I finally want to do a septic again, so I said, oh great.
So he did the test fit for the septic design, I said, hey, you might as well do it for the other two lots while you're at it. So he set the logs, he has a little spot, the elevation of the log, and a few crew located it. He was within a half a foot in all of them.
Yeah, there you go. Well, the few crew located two, one lot.
That's because I did two, because one I didn't like, it was down on a frigging depression.
Okay, that's, I erased that.
Yeah.
It's not a test fit anymore, it's just a hole.
Yeah.
Yep.
They'll move like fifty feet.
Yeah, you need to move very far.
No.
Up against the lots.
One acre each.
Where they have town water and, well.
I'm gonna make them town, town is one acre minimum.
Oh, is that it?
Okay.
Oh, wow, okay.
We're on.
I guess I'm done BSing. Good evening, welcome to the January eleventh twenty twenty four planning board meeting. The first item on the agenda is Christina Valente, maybe? Bishop of Protestant, okay. Okay. Okay, I'll get there. The Bishop of Protestant Episcopal Church, New Hampshire. But first I gotta appoint. Who wants to? I'll appoint Jack, a voting member, because Chuck is not here. He missed me, come on up. I have a question for you right away, though.
Yes, sir.
On the notice it says conceptual.
Yes.
On the application, it's check design review.
Hmm, interesting, it should not be a design review, it should be.
Because you don't meet the application requirements for design review.
Yes.
Good, we can downgrade that to, we can downgrade you to conceptual, let's know that.
Okay, beautiful. I'm getting ready, sir?
Yeah, what do you want to do?
Good evening, planning board, my name is Christina Valenti, and I would like your permission this evening to open a Montessori toddler school in the town of Ware. Coverbridge Montessori, I would like to put at the Episcopal Church in East Ware, I'd like to take their old church space and turn it into a Montessori school just for toddlers. It would be children ages eighteen months to three years of age, it would be a school year program and a half day program as well. Included in the tuition of my school would be a full diaper service and a full laundry service, so I could focus on toilet training. One of the reasons why I want to go to the town of Ware is that it is my understanding that Ware is an infant toddler desert, there are no schools for parents to send their children to, all there is is nursery school up, but if they had a lower school for children of toddler age, that would be really great, because it could be a feeder for the schools. Um, the tuition of my school for the school year would be about, about fourteen thousand dollars, because that's including in.
We don't care about that.
Okay, what would you like to know, sir, then? I'm a kind of a novice at this, so.
Parking, traffic, septic, where, are you gonna do any additions?
Okay, no additions.
Okay.
Parking, I'm going to do a car line, so what I'm going to have them do is, is I've only been licensed for ten children, so it is a car line that starts at eight twenty to about eight thirty, and they're gonna queue up, down, queue up, they have like a curved driveway, so they're gonna queue up in that, um, in that gravel parking lot, and they're just gonna pull up and go.
Okay, so if you're coming from seventy-seven, you're gonna pull into the gravel parking lot, hang out for a bit, and drive out and leave.
Yes, drive out and leave, drop them off and go, kiss and go, that's what we call it, kiss and go.
This is gonna be what, in the basement or?
It is gonna be at the side, it's the old chapel.
You get the building to be on the left side, is what you're saying?
Yes, it would be on the left side, yes. Ah, voila.
I know, I know the building well, but I'm just, I know they have a meeting space and stuff.
Yes.
Down the basement, yeah.
Yes.
And they have restrooms and stuff.
Yes.
That's what I was wondering, kitchen.
Yes.
Okay, so you're, but you're gonna be upstairs.
Upstairs, upstairs, I'm not providing a food service, um, the parents will have to bring their own food, I don't do that due to allergies and everything like that, so I would be providing my own, they would be bringing their own food, but I will be providing a diaper service and a laundry service in with the tuition.
So what are you doing with all the used diapers?
So, um, I am Montessori trained, so in Montessori, um, we toilet train them via a Montessori method called the bambini method. So after the first month of school, every child that's in a diaper moves to underwear, and it's about the senses in your body and the nerves down in your genital area to toilet train the children.
I actually wouldn't know what you do with the waste.
Oh, with the waste? Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
I didn't hear how you got it there.
Okay, so with the waste, what we do is, I have, I have Ubi diaper pails.
Okay.
I have Ubi diaper pails, and then they get tied in a plastic bag and put in the diaper pail. For the laundry service.
Then where?
Then we're in the dumpster.
Okay. But you figure a month and they're out of the diapers?
Mm-hmm.
That's good. My dog was housebroken four days.
I give them a month to get adjusted into school.
Yeah.
And then once I do that, I throw away the diaper and I never look back, because, um, children are no longer toilet trained by the age of two, in nineteen sixty-seven, ninety percent of children were toilet trained by the age of two, because there were no disposable diapers and there were no pull-ups. So this is a very old method, and I've used it, and I've trained hundreds of children via this method.
Cool.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
And it may not necessarily be for you, because you don't necessarily understand, know the regulations, so I'm asking my fellow members, what's the difference between a Montessori school and a daycare?
How do I know?
No.
No? Okay.
It's, it, it's a school, so like unclosed.
But, but for regulation purposes in zoning, is there a difference between a school and a daycare in terms of what you can and can't do?
I don't think so.
She's calling it a school, so I'm gonna say yes.
Well, is it because it's what it's called, or because it's what its practical purpose is?
No.
Is it a daycare, is it a school? Because changing diapers and potty training sounds like a daycare. A school would be A, B, C, one, two, three.
But that's what Montessori is.
But I'm just going off of what she said.
Eighteen months, it's gonna cover a little bit of both, eighteen months, three years.
It's what they call a bridge, so in a, in like a, in like a school that's got infants all the way to kindergarten, my classroom was what they call a bridge, so it's a cross between a toddler room and a preschool room.
But in terms of zoning and what you wanna do it, is there a difference in terms of zoning or what we consider for usage?
It says here in, for the zoning board application, it says here, um, as a preschool slash daycare for ten toddlers. So it's a combo.
You've already been on the zoning board, it sounds like.
I'm going to the zoning board the fifth of March, but I've already had the state come out and look at the, I've had the state come out and look at the site, and I've already had the board of health come out and look at the site as well.
That's a good question.
Yeah, is there a difference?
Well, yeah. Either way, there's allowed uses as churches, municipally owned and operated educational facilities. There's some golf courses are municipally owned and operated facility.
Mm-hmm.
Not that. Agricultural, single two, single and two family houses. Lot of home-based business.
Now, it is my understanding that the bishop is approving a Montessori school to be opened in New London, New Hampshire, and they're not having issues with that.
That's New London.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm not really sure.
And you don't know, I mean, we have several zoning classifications in town.
Okay.
So it depends on where you are in town, what zone you're in.
Mm-hmm.
And then the allowed uses fall into play depending what zone you're in.
Okay.
Do we know the zoning?
Pardon me?
The zoning, is it residential?
Yes. I'll do double checking that to make sure that's working. You, you said you were going to the zoning board?
I am, the fifth of March.
For?
For
Yeah, what's?
A request for a special exception.
For?
To open the school.
Because the zoning must not be, gotta be special exception to the zoning.
Okay. Article nineteen, let's see how it's.
Yeah, we knew it was nineteen, but.
So it's already, we cut that out. The family seasonal camps, bed and breakfast, all those. Yes, I just, I flipped the page, I saw private schools, it was on the page. Yeah. Nineteen one eight, it's private schools and daycare both in there, so. Nobody's already been through this. So if you're going for zoning for that, that's what we need, so. So you're gonna have ten kids, so theoretically you could have ten cars, not a big deal.
Mm-hmm.
They aren't gonna stay there, so the parking's not an issue. Hours are gonna be Monday through Friday, I assume?
Monday through Friday, um, the children would come eight to one. Now, I do wanna say, um, Mr. Francisco, Francisco, correct?
I'm Craig.
Mr. Craig, I do want.
No, 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 mister.
Just Craig, okay, so I do wanna say, Craig, that the state has approved me to do three options, so option A, I could do an AM class and a PM class. So like my AM class could be eight thirty to eleven thirty, and then my PM class could be one to three, or one to three thirty. B, they've offered me eight thirty to one, or C, they offered me a school day class, which is like eight thirty to three thirty. I'm gonna start with eight thirty to one, I think that that is, then the toddlers can go home and nap, and parents that work from home can have their children nap and things like that, so I'm gonna start eight thirty to one. Maybe down the road, I might do eight thirty to three thirty, I don't know if an AM class and a PM class for toddlers is the best ideal, I've been doing this twenty-five years, it's that one to three thirty is usually their nap time anyway, so. So I'm thinking maybe down the road, maybe add to full day, but I'm starting half day to start.
When you apply, you might wanna think big. That way you're approved for eight to four, whatever it is.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you're only operating eight thirty to one thirty, that doesn't matter.
Hmm.
You know what I mean?
I think I have to work that out with Kristen Daly, who is the licenser, but I did tell her I wanted to start half day only and be school year only as well. So like my school would open like the day after Labor Day, I know you guys go before Labor Day, but I would open that like the Tuesday after Labor Day, be closed for two weeks at Christmas, closed all the school vacation weeks, excuse me, and snowstorms, things like that.
No, what I'm saying, when you, I believe you're gonna want a site plan.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
When you apply for the site plan, if you wanna be open eight thirty to one thirty, but you might wanna do eight to five, put down eight to five.
Okay.
That way you don't come back to change your hours.
Okay.
And your hours are good.
Okay.
If you, the site plan says you're approved for eight to five.
Okay, and is that with the zoning board for the site plan?
No, that's us.
That's us, so I have to come back next month with the site plan?
Once you get approved by the zoning board?
Once I get approved by the zoning board, I have to come back and have a site plan, okay, I'm a bit of a novice at, even though I've opened schools, like this is like my first official school being the head of school of open for Montessori toddler programs for other schools, so, so I need a site plan, okay, great.
Any other questions, anybody? You gonna do anything outside with the kids?
There, there's a little play yard outside.
Is it there already?
Yes, it's already there, yes.
You're not making any bigger adding?
No, I'm not, no. I'll put like a little tyke's house in, I wanna get like the little turtle sandbox, it's got the shells, the lid.
Hmm.
So, no friends go to the bathroom in it, you know, usual MO.
Questions? Comments?
Okay.
I think we're all set, I think it sounds good.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Good luck at the zoning board.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, sorry, there was a miscommunication there last month.
I, and it was so sad, sir, because I invited all my parents to come, and I sent them all Christmas cards, and I have a gift and they all show up.
That happens, yep. Okay, next item on the agenda is George Overton for another conceptual one. Two fifty-seven Dustin Tavern. Hello, sir.
Hi, my name is George Overton, two fifty-seven Dustin Tavern Road, and I'd like to open up a, uh, get a wholesale dealer's license out of my house, a car dealer's license. For all intents and purposes, there's no traffic. The nature of a wholesale license is I can't sell to the public, I can only sell to dealers and auctions. This is my twenty-third year in the car business, that's all I've ever done, so I don't necessarily have a need for the cars to be at my location at my house. Typically, you buy them online, and I can ship them to whatever dealer or wherever they're gonna go, so. I just need to be able to facilitate the deals out of my house or have an office in order to be approved.
You work there alone?
Say that again?
You work alone?
Uh, I, I'm, I'm engaged in the car business now.
No, no, a house, do you have any employees?
No, 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 it would just be myself, it's, it's strictly just to do paperwork in a place where a state trooper can come, and once a year they come and audit your paperwork and make sure you're doing things properly. So theoretically, it's just a, a professional office out of my house.
So it's a home office?
That's all it is, yeah. I, I don't think there's any reason why the state wouldn't give me the license, I've held three before, I don't have any issues with the state, never had any problems. It's just usually they, they just want the town approval, because they're gonna send you guys a letter making sure it's okay to do it here. And then they come out and inspect the site.
Plus, I would assume it's allowed, you, that's kind of people like that, right?
No, village.
You allowed to do that in the village? Their home office? I'm asking.
Light commercial uses?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Office. Twenty, twenty-two, four-two. Twenty-two, four-two?
Page twenty-seven. Section twenty-two point four point two. Light commercial uses such as those limited. Offices, churches, schools.
Also proving their offices, churches. Schools and offices meeting also, I think it's got so. So you're obviously not gonna need a sign or anything else, you're gonna?
Um, so that's when the state communicates with the town, typically what they express is you need a sign with ten inch letters that you can see from the road. Um, so if you'll allow that, I could have a sign, if, I, I used to have one out of my house in Merrimack, and they didn't make me have a sign.
I guess it would be the purpose of the sign, really, um.
It's just, it's just a formality, what they do, because they lump everything together, a lot of the dealerships have the same qualifications, um, except for, for like a retail, you need a certain square footage, they get rid of that based on just like a home office, but they still keep all the other requirements the same, but they, they have been flexible in the past.
Yeah. So you're gonna basically to buy cars online and ship them online and that's it?
Yeah, yep, yep, they do give me a plate, so if I buy something off the road, I can put a dealer plate on it and transport it around, but it's during like business hours, for pleasure and stuff like that.
You're not gonna have fifteen cars parked down there for sale or anything like that?
That was a condition of when I was in, when I had my one in Merrimack.
He's got that right here too, no vehicle will be on sale on the property.
I can't, well, I can't, no, I don't repair them on site, and I can't, I cannot sell to the public, so there's, it wouldn't be advantageous to have, yeah, it wouldn't make sense to have ten cars in my yard, because I, I can't sell them to anybody. I don't need ten strangers coming to my house every day looking to buy cars. And I can't sell them to.
Could you, um, just, do me a favor, I'd like you to just take the same former here, and just add a line on the bottom saying you don't have any onsite employees? Other than just yourself, I mean, yourself is, we're not counting yourself as an onsite employee.
Yeah, okay, yeah, like right now, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
The, the, the one that she wants to keep in the file, do it on the original. Yeah, not, not, not any of these, because they're all scribbled on paper. Yeah. Because I don't see a problem. No, I don't either. Well, once we get that employee thing straightened out.
Right.
There's no employees, you don't need to worry about traffic, parking, septic or anything. Right. Because it's just him. Right.
Yeah, there's nobody that, that works there, it's just myself, instead it's just doing paperwork, I have a filing cabinet and they come and audit you and make sure you're selling cars and you're doing your paperwork properly, tidling cars properly, things like that.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we decide he does not need a site plan for his business. If we pass that motion, would that be good enough for what you need?
Um, basically, as long as it gives me permission to have that there, because like I have the, I have to go to a dealer bond and I have to fill out the application with the state, but I started here, so as long as they send you a letter and you guys say it's acceptable for me to have a dealer's license out of my house, then that's, that's all I need.
So I make a motion, we, we decide that Mr. Overton does not need a site plan.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you're all set.
Sure, thank you, gentlemen, have a great day.
I watched that the other day for some reason. You go back, what, the new one?
No, the old one.
Mac, and where do I get the application to get the site plan?
In the land use building.
Land use.
Part over there.
Okay, and are they out there available?
They're also available online.
They're available online, okay, good, okay.
Do that, everyone, you can come in the doors, hang a, hang a right.
Mm-hmm.
Hang a right, and you'll be in the building department, and Katie or somebody can help you over there. Katie, Tony, somebody. Tony, somebody. The next item on the agenda is Matthew Andrick, Whitetail Commercial Development. We know where that is.
Yep.
How's it going? Uh, my name's Matthew Andrick, uh, I'm looking for approval to, uh, start up a, uh, state inspection station at thirty-three Whitetail Lane, Unit One. Pretty much taking over for Gerald that was there. And, uh, been there for about a year now, and decided it's just time, I want my license to expire, I am a licensed inspector. That's pretty much it, again, I'm a novice at this also.
Where, where is thirty-three Whitetail Lane, Unit One, dead too?
Uh, Granite State Plumbing and Heating, Oil Mill Road.
Oh, there, you're.
Right on the border there, um.
You drive down the road, Granite State's on your left?
Uh, Granite State's on the left, it's the new building, all the way to the right, past the Granite State Crane.
Okay.
Um, Gary Rumelard owns it.
So you're back in that little?
Yes.
That little corner. You're, you're, you're in the original?
Okay.
The old building.
No, there's a new building there.
Granite State Crane's in the new building on the right.
Uh, he's got three now.
Now he's put two more in the same?
Yes.
From that kept in there. Yeah, you gotta go over the hill back into the new path, yeah, okay, that's who you're talking about.
Yep.
Which I thought it was. Was the guy in the spec, inspection station there before?
He was.
He should have come in. Yeah. Surprised the state gave it to him. Oh, have you met the school, they, they just look at it, you get the square, square footage, you meet the requirement for inspection. Get the plan, get the plan right off the side? I don't think they look at it.
They've got me to know it.
No, not that I've ever known of them to do it. I'd have to look at that site plan, see what we had to put the conditions of what could be done and what couldn't be done there. Yeah, we did, I remember we did talk about auto repairs services, and they said. We got some things listed in there, what can and can't be done there, I don't know what they were, off the top of my head. I don't either. But I don't think I have. Did clean that real well, but I cleaned it out today. I don't remember, I don't remember, we don't remember what the list of uses and what you had to do to the planning board when we approved that site plan for the whole thing. I don't have a problem with doing it, from what I see, but I, we'd like to make sure we are. It's not a limitation on the site plan. Right. Yeah. Make sure we're limiting ourselves. What's our next meeting? We have any on? Two weeks, so. Would you mind coming back in two weeks?
No, not a problem.
We can do a little research on this.
Okay.
Or even you can do a little research, because it was approved as a condominium.
Oh, really?
This whole, that whole thing.
Oh, okay, okay.
Building is a, I don't remember how many units there is, it was supposed to be four? I believe four per building and five buildings or something. Whatever it was, it's been a long time. You can build them all. But when it was approved, we had certain things that were allowed and certain things weren't allowed.
Okay.
And I don't remember what was allowed, what wasn't allowed.
Alright.
So we just gotta double check to make sure everything's kosher and I can, we can do that pretty quickly.
Alright.
I can get online and.
Appreciate it.
Get the plan.
Okay, yeah, it's not a problem, um, so two weeks from today?
Yes.
Okay, same time?
Same time, same place.
Alright.
Two weeks.
Alright, thank you guys, thank you, sir.
Okay, see you in two weeks, and you'll be first.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Joining off of meeting, because there's no one but us, we're gonna continue it. Oh, yeah, we don't need to go on that. Okay, we got one more conceptual. Christina Ivanjack, Derek Panett, on thirty-three North Bark Highway.
I have a letter from Christina, basically stating that I can be on behalf of the property.
Probably we should go to her, but.
Oh, sorry.
I'll look at it first. Yeah, it looks good to me.
She had a FedEx it from Cape Coral, so.
We'll leave this right here for.
Okay, thank you.
I won't lose it. So which building are you talking about, the one in the back?
So, there's a big warehouse in the way back, that's, that's indoor cold storage, so the unit that I'm renting is around of the backside of the main building, that's closest to the road, so you drive down that kinda alleyway, and there's a house on the right, and then the Golden Silver Pond Place is on the left.
Yep.
So you drive down that kinda alleyway, and it's, it's hooked right around the backside.
Back where we got the.
Exactly, where the Shiner Oasis is, so that overhead door to the left of the Shiner Oasis, that's the bay right there that I'm renting.
Shiner Oasis?
It's a nice spot. It's an oasis, yeah.
You're gonna do, uh, what, marine?
Yeah, so it's a automotive, uh, marine and small engine type repair.
Yep.
Yep. Um, they have plenty of parking out back in that back right-hand corner where I usually have most of the boats that I shrink wrap and winterize and stuff like that and service.
They do that too, down the.
Yep, yep, shrink wrapping, winterizing, servicing, and then as far as car goes, just general maintenance, nothing crazy, no bodywork. Just basic repairs on automobile.
You don't store anything there other than what you're working on?
So they do a storage thing there, like what is in that building, and then they have like a couple campers outside, um, but as far as like the boats and stuff like that, that's all, that's all what I have there.
You, you rep from people and they come pick them up, take them home?
Exactly, yeah, yep. Or if they want stores there, they go through the Ivanjacks and pay them to store, I don't have, I don't rent that spot out.
Right, right.
I have kinda like leeway of where I can park out there, I've customer boats and cars and stuff like that, but anything that is rented, it goes through them. And I think they have already been approved for a storage type situation there, I think, so.
Yeah, it was the ori- original site plan, it was. I don't remember. Yeah, I know.
He's at, yeah, yeah.
I did the original site plan.
Did you?
Yeah. Fifteen years ago. Or more. I don't remember that. Employees?
Uh, no, just myself. My wife wants to quit her job and work for me, but I don't think.
Oh, you don't wanna do that.
I don't wanna do that. No, not yet, not yet. I totally pump the brakes. I have, um, a certificate from the state of good standing with the, I don't know if you guys need that, and I have proof of insurance, um.
You have an inspection station in there?
No, no, and I don't know if I'm gonna go that route or not. Probably not, it's more of a headache than it is, than it's worth. At this point, I, I'm, I'm not doing an inspection station.
Just mechanical repair, right, not, not bodywork?
No bodywork.
Nope. Brett had employees here before, so I mean, I mean, I don't know what the original site plans are for employees, but it was more than just him. And we had the front of the building to park it.
So all my parking is out back. I don't have, no customers will be parking out front.
Yeah.
There's like kind of like a couple spots on the right-hand side as you go down that alleyway, and then, like I said, I have all that area in the way, way back, right-hand corner, and then just past the dumpster on the left-hand side, there's a row of parking right there as well that I can utilize.
So most of it's gonna be just drop and go?
Exactly, yeah, and at any given time, you know, up in the fall, it's gonna be the busiest where the boats are kinda coming in, Exactly, yeah. And at any given time, you know, up in the fall, it's gonna be the busiest where the boats are kinda coming in, um, getting winterized and shrink wrapped. But as far as like right now, it's just car, car traffic. And I have maybe at any given time, four to five a day, maybe, at the most. Um, like I said, I'm by myself. I'm not trying to.
Is there a bathroom in that unit or is it?
Yep, yep, bathroom. And then I framed in an office. Um, there's a side door.
Yep.
That I, you know, framed in the office area right there. And then the customers will come in that door and then cars will come in that back overhead door.
Any issue with size of boat?
It's a pretty good sized door in, in bay.
As far as what?
How big of a boat?
Well.
USS Minnow, skipper and gulligan on it. You know, you gonna be able to back that thing in or not?
Mostly what I work on is like pleasure craft stuff. I mean, I think the biggest boat I've had in there is maybe like a twenty-six foot pontoon boat. Um, the unit itself is, I think, forty by sixty.
I was just thinking of vehicles getting in and out. If it was like a trailer, large truck bringing a boat or anything like that, but.
Gotcha.
Does Brugge Size park anywhere in the back?
Yeah, like I said, I mean, getting down that alleyway is somewhat tight, but once they get past that, and honestly, there's not a whole lot of traffic out back there. Everybody basically parks out front. Um, so once they get past and through there, that it's wide open for them to spin around, drop and go, or pick up and go, basically.
Yeah, I mean, it, they, there's, somebody used to have a tractor trailer down it and they go all the way down the back, so. Navigable, anyway.
You do oil changes and stuff like that, do we just?
Yep.
Do you?
Yep. Yep, all the oil gets con- you know, stored in a container. Um, I got a buddy down the street that has a shop that he has a waste oil furnace. Um, and I just bring it to him, get it out of the, so nothing flammable kinda hangs around. Not that oil is volatile, but.
You, you park customer vehicles outside overnight?
Yes, and I have insurance on that.
How many vehicles?
A day. Like I said, maybe like.
Parked overnight?
Maybe one or two overnight, if that. It all varies. It depends on what the work is being done or, or whatnot, you know what I mean? It's tough to kinda give a number.
I don't see any issues with this either.
Yeah, I, I would like him to do the same thing the other guy did. I wanted to add a couple things on here.
Oh, I thought you were gonna talk about the, the other guy. We continued.
Oh, no.
No employees and.
No bodywork.
No bodywork.
Hours?
Uh, eight to five.
Six days a week?
Five.
Five days a week?
I got a wife and kids. She'd kill me. I gotta have weekends. Same thing. I've, I've lived in town since ninety-one. I've worked in Manchester as a mechanic for twenty-something years and I wanted to be, I wanna be in the community working. Sick of driving to Manch.
I, I hear ya.
Naomi's got the original over there.
Okay.
I want, could you add some things on the bottom?
Sure.
And give this to her.
Describe in detail part.
Said you're going that way anyway.
He's gonna have two employees.
I'm sorry?
Limited to two employees.
Limited to two?
Yeah.
Jeez.
His wife wanted to work with him.
How is, he didn't want her to though?
Yeah, but that's him and two more, that's three.
I'm gonna get.
No, no bodywork.
No bodywork.
Trust me, I don't want to.
Yeah. Hours, eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Oh, I had.
Got a max of like three customer vehicles overnight? Outside? You could fit a few inside too, but just outside we're talking about.
You got room for a lot more than that, yeah?
Yeah, I know.
You got enough room for? Eight anyway.
Three.
I think so. Once you go over those limitations, you have to come back.
What's that?
Once you go over those limitations, you're gonna have to come back.
So, the letter from Christine.
I'm all set. He's all set. We're all set.
You're gonna keep that? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Make a motion or something. Well, to make a motion to.
Make a determination that he doesn't need a site plan.
Yeah. You did that, you still? I second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So now we're down to zoning amendments. First one is the wetland setback and buffer ordinance. I saw somebody walked in and definitely wants to hear about this one. And if you want a copy of it, I got a couple extra copies. That was not with my new revised one as of yesterday. Going to.
Really?
Okay. Whatever.
You got a package, Naomi? I guess you have the other ones too, I didn't put you on top.
I printed all up.
You got, you said you got a package of what? Oh, I've got that. Oh, oh, hold on a second. Ah, thank you.
So the first one's a wetland buffer setback ordinance revision. And I emailed this around Tuesday, I believe.
It was Monday night or Tuesday?
It might've been Monday night. Kind of a blur. Basically, I, uh, I took the one we had two weeks ago. I called up Tom Zolkolovsky, who's a s- wetland scientist, soil scientist, lives in Ware, so. I've used him several times in jobs and other people, but. And he had told me about some of these things before, but in Boulder mostly his revisions. And basically it's just, uh, methodology to assess the wetlands. And some typos. I don't really wanna read two pages of ordinance. For the audience, the purpose, the theory is, the purpose is that some right now, if you have a lot that was created before two thousand and three, you do not have a setback. After two thousand and three, you have fifty-foot wetland setback. Any lot has a twenty-five-foot wetland buffer, doesn't matter when it was created. This would add a method to vary the setback in the buffer depending on the values of the wetland.
You don't have a setback over puddle.
Correct. If the puddle's a wetland, we would not have a setback. Unless there was frogs in the puddle, then you would have a setback. So, it's quite that simple, but yes.
Yes.
So. And I just wanna clarify, I guess for everybody, everybody else's understanding that because we're not eliminating the setback and buffer scheme that's in place. This is, only applies to moving forward. So this will only apply to lots that are being subdivided. Because all the lots in place now, the existing buffer and setback would apply. So that, because this becomes problematic if we try to enforce this on current lots when somebody goes to put up a shed or something. Because that means they're gonna have to hire a soil scientist to determine the wetlands and the, the value of the wetland. We don't wanna do that. We wanna have this applied to new lots being created. Which is all existing lots, the, now if, if they realize that they have a little tiny wetland on their site, they're more than welcome to hire a soil scientist and meet, meet the qualifications so that they don't have.
No, this is only, this is only valid for lots created after March twenty-four.
So you, you don't think that if some, somebody came in?
Somebody had a, a lot created in two thousand and ten, came in and said, my wetland is no value, I don't have a setback?
If they have soil scientists backing up, yeah?
I don't care. Zoning says you have a setback. Sorry.
They could probably get a variance, but okay.
Yeah, they could probably get a variance. I, I don't disagree with that. But this is moving forward. So anybody coming in for a lot line adjustment or a subdivision, we have to have the wetlands delineated, meaning we would not be waiving wetlands all the time for lot line adjustments anymore. We would probably be doing a lot more site walks to make sure that the wetlands are what they're saying it is. I know at least one person, oh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry?
But yes, I was gonna say, the guy behind you I know is here for this particular reason, so come on up. Yes, public, public comment.
I'd be glad to have those who wanted to speak to us before. So, how was the late cover to the meeting?
You'll, you'll stay for last?
I'm, I'm just gonna be, uh, I have just a quick comment.
Sure.
Question. Uh, I appreciate the overview that you just gave, both you gentlemen, that, you know, the insight. I don't have the knowledge that you guys have, being on these boards for years. Um, so I, I, I get into the election every year and I go, oh, man, I don't know anything about these zoning amendments and I gotta spend more time on it. So that's why I'm here. And so.
Great.
And there are a lot of people watching or that'll watch the video who are doing the same thing that can't be here. So, uh, I appreciate that and the, the time spent on it. Um, for each of these, that, that overview of why this is important is valuable and if there's any examples of problems that have been created warranting the amendment, if you could give a little back, backstory on each of those, that would be helpful for people like myself who just don't have a clue on some of this stuff. Um, just coming from the outsider's point of view. Um, and, uh, 'cause I think a lot of people feel the same way I do. They, they feel like they're unprepared when they get into the ballot box, you know?
I understand.
Um, and then it's not, it's not covered in deliberative session, so I'm not, I don't have any comments about this specific one, but just in general. And, but actually, I do have one quick question. You, you mentioned two thousand and three, but, but Bruce mentioned n- new adjustments and, and subdivision, subdivisions. How does, how does two thousand and three come into play when you say it's only going forward? I'm not clear on that.
Um, in two thousand and three, the town passed an ordinance for a fifty-foot setback as of the date of this ordinance. So, if the lot's created as of two thousand and three, you have a setback.
Okay, before that, there isn't one.
Right.
Okay.
When we passed the wetland buffer ordinance, it did not have that clause in there, so it goes for everybody.
Okay.
To answer your other question, which really wasn't a question, but I'm gonna answer it anyway. I'm, I'm a licensed land forever here. I do a lot of, for thirty years, I've been doing subdivisions, lot line adjustments, all those things. Bruce is septic designer, so he gets into the wetlands also. I and I work all over the place. I got a job in Plymouth right now. I just finished a job at Peterborough. We're doing one in Rye. I'm all over the place. Kingston, you name it. And over the years, you s- I see various towns' ordinances. And I thought it was a good idea to be able to say, well, this wetland doesn't have any value, so it doesn't have a setback. However, this wetland is really nice, so it should have a bigger setback. That's the theory of it.
Okay.
Why, why?
Less rigid?
Why hinder somebody for a wetland that doesn't have any value to the wetlands, the wildlife, flooding, et cetera? Why limit, why protect it?
Mm-hmm.
If it doesn't have minimal value. Same time, if something has a lot of value, you should protect it even more. That's the theory that, why I did this.
And, and a wetland scientist would make that determination?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a certified wetland scientist delineates the wetlands. He usually ties up flagging the edge of the wetland and numbers them, then the surveyor can connect the dots, basically. And there's hydro- methodology in here, there is now to write, to write the report and assess the various values and functions of the wetland.
Is there additional cost to somebody filling out a permit process, um, to have that done? Sounds like, it sounds like it could be helpful to some people, but I'm just curious, the cost? To bring that person in?
It's probably gonna take a couple hours to write the report. I mean, the guys that are out in the field delineate the wetlands anyways. Everybody sees what's there.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of putting it on paper. So say a couple hours to write the report?
Doing the value assessment.
Right, right. Couple hundred bucks.
So it's not a new thing. It's not a new requirement. It's already been, it's already happening.
It's done in other places, yes.
Yeah, if there's.
If you ever do a wetland permit, you have to do it.
You have to do it anyways.
I mean, if you're ever gonna deserve a wetland, you need a permit from the state, DES, and they're gonna want a, a report about the wet, the values of the wetland.
Then if they do a subdivision currently in town, they have to have it delineated anyway, so the guys out there flagging.
Right.
So it, that, that field work is no different.
So lots created after two thousand and three that are being involved in a subdivision or an adjustment have to follow, in, get involved in this process?
No. This is gonna start in two, this will start in March if it passes.
Right, for, for lots that were created two thousand and three forward, right?
No, for two thousand, from two thousand and three until now, it's, you got a fifty-foot setback, you have a twenty-five-foot buffer.
Oh, it's fixed, okay.
Starting in two thousand and twenty, starting in March, if this passes, we'll go to this system.
That's how two thousand and three comes in. Alright, I, I get it. Thank you.
So I can't go back. We, I don't wanna go back and tell somebody that did a subdivision in two thousand and ten, hey, we need a function, the value report in your wetland. That would be strange.
Can people apply for, uh, I guess, variants? I don't know if that's the right word. If they're, if they, if they wanna pay for an assessment and there's low-value wetlands to adjust it?
I would do that. If I was designing a septic system, say, on an existing lot that was subdivided in two thousand and ten, and it would open up a window for me to
Right.
give more flexibility with where to put the house in septic system if that well end didn't have a buffer.
Yeah.
And if it was just a smaller thing, then I would go for variants for that.
Could give some freedom to the land.
I mean, it could, could be where you want to drive, you wanna have a side load garage, you gotta be close to the wetland to get the garage, garage in. There's
Right, okay.
Many things you would need it for without needing it for the actual leach field.
Okay, thanks.
So that, that's the theory.
I'll give some time to other folks. Hey, my name is Tom Flaherty, Sunrise Lane. I didn't mention that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Pratt, Winter Road. Um, I was at the, uh, I saw the conservation commission, um, when you presented this. Um, it, it just, it just struck me funny the way you presented it, um, 'cause you walked in and said, this isn't a planning board thing, it's a high Francisco thing.
Yes.
Um, and my, I, I guess my, my point of that is, has this been discussed by the planning board at any of the meetings or?
Yes.
There are minutes?
Yes.
Attached to this. Okay, I just, I haven't had a chance to go through. Do you know approximately?
I presented this, oh geez, well, we started in two thousand and nine, if you really wanna get involved in this. Uh, I probably talked about it.
I did. It's, um, Steve on the, uh, conservation committee, he did mention that, uh, he had been on some subcommittees discussing.
We formed in two thousand and nine. Bruce was on it, Steve was on it, at least one other person.
Tom Carr. Yeah.
And, uh, that didn't get anywhere.
But the plan this year to bring it to the, to the, uh, town for a vote that, that's been in the works this year?
Yeah, we started talking about it this summer.
You did.
Okay.
I just want, I haven't seen all the minutes, so.
I know we talked about it quite a bit a month ago.
Yeah. But we talked about it.
We talked about it off and on all summer, all summer long.
Year ago.
Yeah, but we decided not to bring it forth.
The, um, there was a good point brought up, uh, by Susanna on the, uh, commission yesterday. Um, she had mentioned that, um, why, why couldn't there be an option to maintain, uh, the fifty-foot setback instead of incurring a cost that we have, we decided we didn't want? But it was something that was brought up, so, um, I'm not sure if Andy's gonna mention that, but.
I'm sure Andy's gonna mention it.
It was mentioned yesterday. And other than that, I don't, uh, I don't know how much of an advantage it is to, it seemed like a complicated system over something that's been, uh, used and doesn't seem to have been a problem, but it's my opinion.
It's not as comp- to the, to the serve, I had wetland scientists, it's probably not as complicated as what you and I think it is. 'Cause I agree, it sounds complicated.
Yeah.
But to the, to the person that has the education, the school and behind it, I'm sure it's not, just like surveying is complicated, but it's not to me. It's pretty simple.
Is this, I mean, is this something that is gonna make it more appealing to put in subdivisions in the area? Is that, is that the ultimate goal of this? Or, you know, we're trying to attract builders and increase the town and?
I'm just trying to make it, I'm just trying to make fair setbacks is what I was thinking. Like I said, if the, if the wetland doesn't have any value, why are we protecting it?
But fifty-foot setback is not fair in your opinion?
For a wetland to be, that's, you could have a wetland the size of this table and I only gotta stay fifty feet away from it. And the wetland could have no value whatsoever. But I still gotta say, that's suddenly a hundred and five feet I can't use. And the wetland could have no value whatsoever, but I still gotta say, that's suddenly a hundred and five feet I can't use.
But it's been problematic in the town?
Well, I know of a couple houses built in the setback, I don't know if they ever got a variance or not, but.
So a couple houses out of?
I don't know, I, I didn't, I didn't do a survey to see if there's, what the issues are.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify.
Like I said, my background, I'm looking at everybody else's, every other town's ordinance, and I kinda brought them all together into this.
But I'm just, in my head, you know, just cause other towns have systems in place, are they advantageous, you know, to our town? That's, that's, that's my opinion.
They're advantageous in protecting our waterways, I mean, we've got some pretty, we've got a lot of feeders to Horace Lake, we've got a couple rivers around through town that a lot of tributaries feed into them that we don't wanna fill them full of nitrates.
Right, but you're saying that what we have now doesn't protect that?
Well, this, this is gonna protect the good ones more. Instead of a fifty foot setback, the good, the valuable wetland is gonna have a seventy five foot setback.
Spare.
That's, that was my theory.
Sorry. That's all I get.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Mr. Fulton?
Good evening, Andy Fulton, Chair of the Conservation Commission. We've talked about this at a, I guess, our January meeting, just yesterday, last night. And back, Craig presented the bones of it back to us in December. Appreciate you doing that, Craig, of course. And I guess the, the overall concern was, it seemed like we were making some, proposing some changes here that were a little bit of a solution in search of a problem from our perspective. And we're where we're going from something that's very simple right now, this pushes towards, towards something that's more complex. There's a lot of attention that needs to be paid to a reporting that then needs to be evaluated and appreciate that it becomes something that Conservation, like other aspects of subdivision work, I have a chance to comment on.
It says in here, you guys, we can't act on it until you allow, you're given thirty days minimum to look at it.
Yep. I, I think there was fairly broad consensus that there are times when the, the rigidity of the current ordinance doesn't make a whole lot of sense. You know, the ditch next to the driveway, that can be jurisdictional wetland that's two foot wide and twenty foot long. I think in many of our, many of our thinking, doesn't amount to much. Although Steve did caution that you'd be amazed what the, what the wildlife uses. You know, it's a bit of a, if it's there, they will come sort of thing, so it's a hard to, hard to say that a wetland has no value if it's, if it's present. Certainly, there are some accidental wetlands and, and we understand the concept that's being worked with here. On the other end of the spectrum, I don't know that we've seen research that would say increasing the setback might gain additional preservation of the wetland or, or help.
I thought DES were proposing seven hundred foot setback from a vernal pool?
From a vernal pool, no.
I, I have no idea what Wetlands Bureau might be proposing.
Wetlands Bureau is either seven hundred or a thousand foot setback from a vernal pools. They didn't pass it, obviously.
Yeah.
So there must be something, more value to have that kind of a setback. I'm sure it has something to do with frogs and jumping and running over them and things like that, but.
I, I think in my personal experience, as a hydrologist, as somebody who's studied some of the functions of septic systems, you'd be amazed at how much of the treatment occurs in a very short distance, most proximal to your, your you know, your sensitive receptor. So in some cases, and this might seem odd coming from Conservation Commission, it seems like while increasing a buffer from twenty five feet to thirty seven and a half feet,
Doesn't sound like much.
It might, might not bear out that that adds significantly to the protecting the higher quality wetlands. So I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, this is just sharing some of our musings last night. And that, that was a little bit of a, of a concern. And then we looked at the, the details of the criteria and we really thought there ought to be some weighting to that and that not all the criteria were of equal value ecologically. And, you know, one of the surest indicators of high value would be item or criteria number six. That lists its species. So we thought, well, you know, if we had more time, could we, you know, if we're gonna adopt this, could we, could we capture a little bit more of the value? So there's some of us who say, well, I'm not sure we need to do this, and then if we're going to, you know, then, then number six would in our view, be a weightier one than some of the others. But I think it's set up to, that each one is of equal value, so any arrangement that, you know, creates the, what, the numbering system that tells you whether it's no value, little value, moderate value, high value. Or, I'm not exactly sure what the words are here and that, so is there any way to, to scale that a little bit?
I would think, I mean, I know that the DES, when you get a, a hit from the National Heritage Bureau for endangered species, suddenly you gotta jump through all kinds of hoops, there's no doubt about it. I had a simple little driveway, to me it was simple, six hundred square feet of wetland fill for a driveway. And I had to go, I probably spent seven thousand dollars because somebody ran over a black racer snake out in the road. But it was a lot of wildlife studies, et cetera. Of course, that's for a permit, that's not for a buffer, that's for the actual wetland permit.
Yeah.
I guess I don't know the answer to that question, cause I haven't read that many reports. I've read several, but not maybe a half dozen or ten, maybe.
Second, or additional?
My other question, I don't, I don't know what Cowardens classifications of wetlands has, and I couldn't ask and find out. That's for sure. Cause Tom Sokoloff, he stuck it in there, so I'm sure it's important.
Yeah. Still in town, I, I would, as somebody I know, wetland scientist, I know I value Tom Carr's feedback on something like this, too.
I do, I would too, I don't know how he contacted him, but, don't tell me. You can write it down, but don't tell me.
I think he did finally actually retire.
I heard he did.
After, after many, many previous intentions.
I have another question, I have a couple other things I wanted to talk to him about, too, and I don't have any contact with him.
Well, absolutely, I would, I would share that and I would value his, his input on it. So a couple, so those are a couple things that go to a, well, you know, a little bit of a where's the fire, can we take a little more time on this to, to vet it a little deeper and go further with it?
We've been dealing with this for almost fifteen years, off and on. Like you just, everybody just said, I had, we had a subcommittee in two thousand nine. And I've been trying to bring this up the last five years.
We didn't hear about it till December.
That, that could very well be, but Steve was on, on the subcommittee.
Well.
In two thousand nine.
Yeah, fifteen, I guess, yeah, we're talking fifteen years ago. So sharing our, sharing our, the point where, where we were at last night in talking about this. And I forget your name, sir? Yeah, Dave, Dave mentioned Zuzu's comment. You know, is, is there, or could there be an option for somebody who's perfectly comfortable in the two lot subdivision or whatever it might be going forward to say, you know what? I appreciate that I, you know, could, or if it was set up as an option, I could go to an approach that would allow me greater, you know, unfettered freedom on my property, but I'm not concerned about that. And for me, I think it'd be less expensive just to stick to what we used to do here.
Well, in my opinion, in that case, we'd just say, okay, it's gonna be a seventy five foot setback and a thirty seven and a half foot buffer. We assume it's a, we assume it's a great wetland, unless you're gonna do a report. Makes sense?
Well, that, that's taking it one step beyond, we hadn't, hadn't, hadn't considered that.
I hadn't thought about it till tonight, but.
Yeah, I mean, if they wanna assume the worst condition.
If you wanna assume, if you don't wanna do the report.
Depends on how, it might be the best condition in somebody's view, you know, it might be somebody excited about having a high value wetland.
Could be, right, right.
And be like, I have the highest value wetland here, or something to that effect, you know?
I got a better, I got a better one, I can show it to you.
But if, I mean, if somebody came up with a plan that just showed a thirty seven and a half foot buffer and a seventy five foot wetland, you know, setback around it, then we'd certainly waive that report requirement.
You don't see how we couldn't. That's the way around that, if you don't wanna spend a couple hundred dollars for it. It's cool with the max.
Last, lastly, we tried to envision some of the larger subdivisions we've dealt with in the last twenty years. And some of them have quite a complexity of, of wetlands.
Yes.
So there might be, you know, pocketed wetlands, you know, closed wetlands
Yep.
on the order of thirty, or, you know, one big one and five little ones, and would there, would there be, would it be a one size fits all? If you've got the one, the one large wetland that's, you know, well, we'll, we'll go to the highest carry, the prime wetland.
I'll, I'll go ahead and go one, I'll, I'll go ahead and mention something we both worked on, Brookshire.
Sure.
You got Hughes Brook going through it, obviously, that's gonna be a high value wetland.
Yeah.
No doubt about it. But there's also a couple, when you drive in, you make the turn to the left, before you get to those houses, there's two little isolated pockets, and I mean, they're literally the size of this table. Why would they have a setback? I haven't seen them in years, maybe they're great, but I just, I don't know if I ever saw them, except on the map. But things like that. Hughes Brook is obviously.
The, the burden would be on the subdivision designer to assess those individually for their, for their ranking criteria.
The wetland scientist.
Right, during, during the design process or during the, in creating the, the data that would go into the design.
Correct.
Obviously, I mean, all the good land, big chunk of, of good land has essentially already been used. So the stuff, the stuff that's come before us now is fragmented.
I'm not sure I follow, Bruce.
We don't have very many farm fields that are nice and dry coming in here for subdivisions anymore. It's steeper and wetter land that's left undeveloped.
Unless, unless something, something's been, you know?
There is a few, no doubt.
Something's been, you know, held for a long time, then it goes into new ownership, or family changes or what have you, then, then that could change.
Mostly, it's the steeper, wetter parcels that are coming, that I'm working on at least, maybe not the ware, but what I'm working on are mostly not very good parcels. Another, another thought of this whole thing is I just, I'm doing a job in Plymouth, two jobs in Plymouth, one he's helping me with. And I had the wetlands flagged with somebody else, not Tom. If he goes too fast now. And he flagged, how do I say, it was a four acre field, it got, it was abandoned, it was plowed, an abandoned plowed. There's a strip seven and a half feet wide, a hundred and forty feet long, it's a wetland. Because it was a bit.
Plough furrow.
Well, I think we've all seen tire ruts that turn into a wetland, you know?
But this, now it has pine trees this big around all through it, and the only reason the wetland signs are sold, he'd follow a deer trail to get back out the road, get out of the thick stuff and pop into a wetland. But things like that, I mean, that's what I'm talking about, why have a, why have a twenty five foot buffer, fifty foot setback? A seven foot wide wetland, it means nothing. That's what got me, that's what gets me. And it really doesn't mean anything, I, I looked at it, it's, what's the difference between that and that, I can't tell the difference.
Do you know whether there's been a reluctance with zoning board to grant the variance in cases like that to this point? You know, the last ten years or so that we've had the buffer?
The, the zoning board?
Yes, or our, the Ware's zoning board through the years, you know, boards and commissions change.
Yes, they granted many.
Have there been anywhere it's, it's been rejected?
Not to my knowledge.
But I think, they're not, they've been granting ones when they're, when they're part of a wetlands application for, like a crossing type thing. I, I don't think they've been as lenient on applications where somebody just wants to go a little closer with their house without getting, without getting into the need for a drainage flow permit. They're, they're, they're trying to.
I, I know of one site that was, had a suite, a site going on this summer, they got a grant for the buffer, for a driveway.
Yep.
For a driveway.
Yeah, we could, didn't, he didn't have to do it. Now you remember.
Mm-hmm.
When we didn't cross the wetland, he could have avoided the buffer, but he went through it.
Right, right.
And he got the, and he got the permit, he got the variance.
Yeah, well, certainly that. The state regulations are pointing strongly towards if you can avoid, avoid.
Right.
You know, if you had another.
Avoid, 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 that's.
Oh, yeah. Any questions that, you know, maybe you came in here thinking Conservation might answer that I haven't touched on? Or points of reference?
I'm sure I'll think of some, but eleven o'clock tonight. I don't have any questions, I already talked to you guys about it, these guys might have questions.
So I guess our, you know, big, you know, looking down on it sort of view was, there's a lot of work that's gone into this, a lot of thought that's gone into it, but, you know, we're kind of on the, the edge of jumping and, you know, we're just thinking maybe we could give it a little bit more attention before making, making the leap into the change. But understand that that perspective is very different than the perspective that certainly you, Craig, have, have felt it in being closer to the industry and, you know, might be the feeling of the, of the board to go ahead with it. In general, I, I think when, when you make a recommendation to change the zoning, that, that goes through pretty well with the voters.
I'm just trying to think of some way to make the endangered species more important than anything else. But I think I could probably do that in the, in the sentence that says the planning board should make a finding on the appropriate setback for the circumstances based on the following standards, with special attention paid to number six or something like that. So it stands out a little bit. You know what I mean?
Yeah, the, the zoning is a challenging thing, you wanna be pretty specific with it and, and a few other, other places, you wanna be like within reason or, or have that sort of straight face test or something where if somebody wants, or shares a different sort of information, you'd be able to consider it within a flexible framework. And hard thing to do with zoning to, to craft the wording in a way that captures that without, you know, opening up an angle that gets exploited for.
A client, a client told me like twenty five years ago, I was working in dairy, I don't even know what we're doing anymore, but I read the ordinance, I said, read that again, I read it again, it goes, the second word, shall, that's powerful, yeah, I like that word, I said, okay. Like you said, if it said should, it'd have been a completely different sentence.
Or may.
Or may, but it said shall.
Oh, yeah.
So I do this, you shall do that.
What a difference a word can make, for sure.
It is, it is tricky, no doubt about it.
Glad, uh, glad for your trying to improve things, Craig, personally, that's a compliment. Thank you for the chance to weigh in.
Whatever chance, whatever changes I make, I will certainly send to you. And if you could send me Tom Carr's contact info, or even ask Tom if you, if it's okay, that'd be appreciated.
Even at the, at the eleventh hour, to, his endorsement would, uh, carry a lot of weight.
Or his saying.
Suggestions.
Or, yeah, or say you're crazy, forget it.
Yeah, there's been, there's a, yes, a huge level of similar experience, but from a, a person who's a wetland scientist. And, um, at the table, Bruce gets the closest to that, but you'd never claim to be a wetland scientist.
No, that, that's why.
I think that was probably the first pass here, as we looked at it, we looked at the language, and it was like, we're kinda like, please, please, don't put this on the shoulders of the septic designers, so folks are loading them up with things that, that wouldn't be appropriate. Cause I know you guys can do quite a lot in, in the appropriate venues within the sphere that you guys work on, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The blackberry jelly was very good. It's gone.
I'm glad you held out until we found that, and Naomi made the point, so, glad you enjoyed it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Bruce has a comment.
Yeah, in, in regards to your, Andy's suggestion about, um, not having to do a report, I'd suggest we add, we've got the setbacks, you've got one, two, three, four, which is determining the setback. We add a five, saying if the landowner is acceptable to applying the maximum setback, no report will be required. And then at the end, twenty-eight point nine point three under the buffer section. If the landowner is acceptable to applying the maximum buffer, no report will be required.
Uh-oh. I closed it for public comment.
No, I didn't. Go ahead.
Neil Kirk, Mount Dearborn Road. Bruce, if I understood you correctly, that guts the entire thing.
No, it doesn't. They get, they, they, they're using the maximum setback and the maximum buffer.
If he uses the maximum setback and the maximum buffer, but he's in an area that Andy thinks needs protection, that really should have a seventy-five foot.
It does, it is, that's what it gives him. Maximum, not the minimum, maximum.
If you don't wanna do a report, you have a seventy-five foot setback.
So this ordinance has a set, maximum seventy-five foot, foot setback, could be zero, could be four feet.
Right.
But the maximum is seventy-five.
Right, right.
Not fifty.
Right.
It's broken down to zero, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that's quite the right way to do it.
The only other way to do it was like, the very, at the very beginning. So they don't have to read any of this.
Pastor Bill's a brainer to this stuff. Where do we put that? No, I like the, I like the amendment that Bruce said at the end, just put it at the end, don't put it in unless the other list, just put twenty-eight point nine point three, and then if they wanna meet the maximum, then the report would be waived. Just put it in there instead of putting it up further, cause that seems to be confusing at that point, and that way it's just straightforward.
Twenty-eight nine three would be the best place.
Yeah, be the best way to do it.
Then it doesn't muddy up one from four.
Yeah.
Okay, then, then that place would do buffer and setback.
Yeah, correct. You're saying to do what? Put the, if the landowner doesn't want to apply, doesn't wanna pay for the report, that's gonna be in twenty-eight nine point three after the buffer? Under buffers?
Yeah, cause it's, well, it's actually two point.
Actually be twenty-eight.
Point nine, point.
Twenty-eight point ten, instead of twenty-eight point nine, twenty-eight ten.
It's actually an exception to the statement.
Yep. Okay, twenty-eight ten makes sense to me.
Yep.
You do it that way, yep.
So it's not in the setback or the buffer section.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
An exemption though.
So I can do a twenty-eight point ten exemption colon. And just say, if a, if a report is not.
Yes. Twenty-eight nine, and twenty-eight ten under buffers.
It's not. Oh, oh, hang on, let me, I'm thinking wordage not where, if a report is not provided to the planning board, the setback will be seventy-five feet and the buffer will be thirty-five feet. Thirty-seven and a half. Right?
Yep.
Something like that?
Yep.
Next time we're allowed to do is change typos, right? I'm adding a twenty-eight point ten.
No.
No. Except, exception, exemption, excuse me. If a report is not provided to the planning board, the setback will be seventy-five feet and the buffer will be seventy, thirty-seven and a half feet. You need to speak higher, louder, or else I'll have a microphone, cause I can't hear you. If a report is not provided to the planning board, the setback will be seventy-five feet and the buffer will be thirty-seven and a half feet. Cause that's all everything else works. Makes sense?
Yeah, that wasn't as for any waivers or anything, it's just automatic.
Right, so should we?
Right.
Should we say that that's representative of the maximum, so that there's a reference back?
No, we don't have to.
I don't think we have to. Well, yes, well, will, shall. Yes, I just said how important that word was.
Yeah.
I don't know about it. Will, shall. Instead of the setback shall be seventy-five feet and the buffer shall be thirty-seven and a half feet, instead of will. So I was gonna stick in the paragraph that says the planning board shall make a finding on the appropriate setback for the circumstances based on the following standards, after circumstances, say circumstances above, cause that's where one through six are listed. With special attention paid to numbers five and six? Yeah.
Yeah, five rolls right, it has and after it, so five and six are kinda tied together.
And for all you people listening out there, says five is are the wetlands identified in the New Hampshire Wildlife Action Plan. As either highest ranked habitat in New Hampshire, or highest ranked habitat in biological region. And six is the state listed species, endangered, threatened, whatever. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know how to, I mean.
I don't think you need to be that, put that statement into that.
No?
No, cause it's pretty clear, if it's gotten to the point where it's five and six are being considered, it's obviously that those are of concern if you're following those, that pattern. But with the, adding of the word and on question, on number five, it means everything that's gone before it has come to bear.
Yeah.
So you have to go through the whole process, all six things have to be looked at, you don't stop at three because you, it doesn't meet the needs of, and, and number four, all of them have to be identified and looked at. Cause you may have a puddle this big, and once a year, you've got an endangered bullfrog in there, the size of a, of a nickel that you need to protect. But that won't happen if you stop at three and it's a wet, dry situation.
If you have a puddle the size of this desk, and you write a letter to the Ha, Natural Heritage Bureau, I keep wanting to say New Hampshire, but it's Natural Heritage Bureau, they come back and they, you send them a USGS map with the property outlined on it. They come back and then you get your map, and they tell you what is reported in it, but they show you where things are. It's not gonna be in this wetland, it might be a half mile away. And therefore, they might use the wetland, cause they're a half mile away.
Correct. But by adding that word and.
It makes them all one instead of two.
Makes them all one.
Yeah.
You're talking about after five?
Yes.
Identify each one.
It's, it's, it's and, cause they, so you, you've got a semicolon at the end, and you're just continuing the sentence all along. And, and and is the conclusive statement that all these things are one unit, even though you're looking at them in five different pieces.
Each one is a separate entity in to itself.
But yet it's a unit.
You could take them all together, or just.
We have to take them all, that's why it's a and.
Each one, some of them may not apply, but then some of them will, so you have to look at it.
Use of the semicolon ties them together.
Right, yep. Putting the word and, I don't think that's right. But I think what I was trying to say is five and six are more important than one, two, three, four. Now that I said that, I'm not sure that's true. Like I said, you've got a puddle the size of this table, and there's a landing turtle a mile away.
You have to have evidence that it's using this puddle, you know, so how do you, how do you assess that?
This is probably have habitat for that turtle. Okay. Talk me out of that.
I'm getting rid of that and.
Pardon?
You talked out of getting rid of that and then?
Oh, I wasn't gonna get rid of the and, I was gonna stick something after circumstances. Okay, I will send this to Tom Carr, if I get his contact info. And I'm gonna ask about Cowardon's classifications of wetlands, just so we know what, we know what that is.
It's not hogified.
Hmm?
It's not hogified.
Oh, no. Any more comment from the public? So I move forward?
Yes. No, we, we don't need to vote until the very end.
Next one is private road. The definition of private road shall mean an access to three or more lots. The private road must be shown on a survey plan dated prior to March nineteen eighty-eight, or be shown on a plan approved by the planning board. The planning board may only approve private roads with conditional use permit application. And for the audience, the reason that March, the nineteen eighty-eight date is in there is cause that's when we adopted zoning and planning. So if it's shown on a map prior to having a planning board in, in zoning ordinances, it is a road. This is in conjunction with the other, whatever the new article is, that we passed two years ago. And in conjunction with that is amending Article seventeen point one point one, that says no building permits for new homes shall be issued on any class six or private road, eliminate or private. So it's a any class six road. Discussion?
Yep, I guess everybody understands what this is for. This is, right now, like, a development like Collins Landing couldn't happen anywhere, because that's private roads. We don't wanna be discouraging people from creating small community development areas and have them build a town road to meet town setbacks and everything else, which kind of opens it, things way up. Would rather have them get things tied together and leave open space. And, and without allowing the private road, we're really discouraging people to create open space.
And you're also forcing people to give the road to the town, and the town to maintain it, obviously. I'm not saying the private road, I, I, we're not changing the standards of construction, we're just changing the name of the road basically from class five to private.
Right. It's, Article four one is specifically to change so that it's recognized as something you could get a building permit for.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Whereas the way it's written now, it's not possible, so that voids Article thirty-seven, which was passed two years ago, I think.
Right.
So that's just a change of language in order to accommodate that, as well as seventeen one one.
Let's see if there'll be any comments on it. Oh, public have any comments on the private road?
Neil Kirk, Mount Dearborn Road, a question. Let's assume Duck Pond Estates was not built and was coming in now after this change was made, okay? What could they do with that property that would be different from what they had to do now? In other words, how would this affect a comparable, significant scale development?
It would. You can't have more than three lots.
Well.
My definition of a private road. So you couldn't fully develop what they have there.
It says three or more.
Yes, you can.
Cause two.
Less than, less than three is a driveway.
So they've got sixty, they have six.
One or two is a driveway, three, three or more is a private road.
They have, let's say sixty lots, and I assume that the number of lo, of, the number of residential units would not change as a result of this?
No, they're not gaining, they're not gaining units at all.
Okay, so what could they do differently with, I'm assuming there are sixty units for our, what could they do differently with those sixty units had that not been built as it is now, but was being built under this new definition?
The town wouldn't take the road over, the town wouldn't own the road, so there wouldn't be a fifty foot strip owned by the town. So you wouldn't have a front setback, cause there's no road.
So they could put the houses as close as they wanted to their private road?
Right.
And what about side setbacks?
We still have the side setbacks, we the same, but you could do a condominium and not have any lot lines. Which is really what I would.
You mean that, a, a, one building with a lot of units in it, or?
I did a, I did a, over fifty-five detached single-family condominium, condo development. They were all one story, one floor, whatever you'll call it, I don't know how big they were, twenty-four by thirty-six, probably, something like that. But they're each, they're twenty feet apart, twenty foot separation between buildings for the fire department. We had, boom, 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 similar to what's done by Gopstown across from the, Phil Augustin. Yes, except they were single family.
So.
Christina is the similar thing that they're talking about.
So from the developer's point of view, it's less expensive, cause I don't have to put in roads to town specs?
No.
Correct?
No, that's not correct. We must still make, I, I'm gonna still make sure they're built to town specs.
Private road has to be built to town specs.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
We're not, we're not relieving them on that.
No.
Okay, so basically, they could have, my word, scrunched all of their buildings closer together?
Yes.
It makes a more walkable community, it makes more of a community than just houses down the road.
Flexibility to do various things.
Can, are there any downsides to this that you folks would like to share with us?
Uh, the downside would be having a development with only two or three people, and they, they don't have much money to take care of the road. Not necessarily plowing, but resurfacing. That's, that's the big downside that I can see. If the development doesn't have enough units to afford to take care of the road.
But you could prevent that from happening?
Yes.
In your approval?
Yes.
So Article twenty-three seven, which was approved, the only way you can build on a. So Article twenty-three seven, which was approved, the only way you can build on a private or establish a private road is through a conditional use permit.
Which is something this board, not the ZBA does.
Correct. So it's not like the developer could say, "I'm just putting a driveway in and putting a cluster of fifty homes." You can't do that. That driveway is now designated as a private road according to Article thirty-seven. And it has to have our approval ahead of time. And then it needs construction at twenty-two, twenty-two feet. Structural section as a Class Five road, et cetera.
There's maintenance agreements and everything else in there.
Built into the ordinance of.
I believe you wrote on the board, when we passed that ordinance, or when the town passed it?
Yes, yes.
And you remember the, about saying the name. There was a road, private road created at the end of a cul-de-sac to access a lot. You remember now?
I'm sort of, yes.
Okay. This, this is in relation to that somewhat, to prevent that from happening again.
But you folks don't see any downside to doing this, only an upside?
Yeah, I don't know.
Based on your experience in other communities and what you've seen them do?
The only thing I can think of is not having enough people to be able to take care of it. Or the condominium, assuming the condominium or homeowner association, them being dumb and voting that we don't need to pay anymore.
But it's not going to, as you said, it's not going to increase the number of lots. That's still fixed by other sections of the ordinance? It will just facilitate.
Hopefully, we gain more open space out of it, too.
Conceivably, yes.
Right.
Thank you.
And we've got, just so everybody knows, we've got setbacks between buildings. So that we don't need lot line setbacks. We, we have a minimum between buildings for fire purposes.
Okay, now down to number four, which is, whoops.
Janice Matthews. The agenda has item number three, amendment number three, says it's the we're building code. I believe that's supposed to be zoning code. So if you reuse this agenda for anything, I believe that's a typo.
Yes.
Okay.
I would say it's a typo.
Should be zoning ordinance, not code.
Next item on the agenda is the campers, I believe?
Yes.
Campers, travel trailers, recreational vehicles. And this became, this came to us from Tony, the code enforcement officer. He was doing this for quite a while, working on gathering information from various towns. And I'll be blunt, Bruce kinda took it over. But the nineteen point one special exception change is strictly a typo. It says, according to standard set forth in Article six point one point four, special exceptions, I should say six point one point three, special exceptions. So that's all there is to number one. Nine point one point eleven is new, and I'll let Bruce go through that, just because he's the author, without the fucking on me. So turn, turn.
The, um. The biggest problem with campers and recreational vehicles and travel, with people just plunking them anywhere on vacant lots, on, in their driveways, whatever. They're, they're, they're being used for more than what campers and travel trailers are intended to be used for. Including people living in them and, and campers and travel trailers were not ever intended to be lived in. If you go buy a new one and you tell who you're buying it from that you're gonna use it to live in it, the warranty is void. Because the manufacturers had no intention of people ever living in them. They don't meet any kind of building code whatsoever. So that's problem number one. It, it, it's a, it's a safe, it's a safety problem. Problem number two is, people typically do that for economic reasons. And a lot of times, they don't have the resources to properly take care of the sewerage that comes out of them. Because that could be an expensive proposition, especially if you're on a little tiny lot that's by a lake or surrounded by wetlands, which a lot of these little lots are. In the beginning, it, I mean, it's great. They move into it, they, they, they have things pumped out, but then they realize how much that costs them when they use water. So what, the only real way to address that is to put time limits on, across the board, on how often it can be used in any particular period, which will help prevent people from living in them on a permanent basis. And once you cut that out, then you've taken care of a lot of the other problems that come with them. So the first part of the, the. And we put a, there's a clause there saying not for rent, which means you can't rent them out. And they can be, they can be used, they can be used for less than fifteen days in any thirty-day period. And the thirty-eight period, you know, the first day they use it is beginning of the thirty-day period. So you can't, they can't say, "We're gonna use the thirty days at the end of one thirty-day period and the beginning of another." The thirty-day period begins on the first day you use it. So that allows somebody, if they, they, they're building a house, they put a camper on there, they can put the camper up there, come stay weekends. They can have relatives come up, stay the weekends. There's no limit to the number of campers, so if they have a family gathering, they can have five campers show up at their house and stay there for a couple of weeks for a family gathering. We're not trying to prevent people from enjoying their land or their home. And, but we, we really don't want people living in the campers. And they're not, it's not allowed to use them at all like that in a commercial or village district. And construction trailers with no running water or sleeping provisions, they can be used for less than a hundred and twenty-one days. So if somebody's building something, they can have one on there, they can put a construction trailer on there for a hundred and twenty days and build what they're building, and then they have to move it off or get a special exception. And if somebody's house, now, when I was doing this, I kinda got into the zoning a little bit. The only place right now and where, where you can put a manufactured temporary dwelling in to live in while you're building a new house, if your house burned down, is in the Clinton Grove Historic District. That's the only place that's allowed right now. So I added this section there, so it's allowed any place in town. If somebody's house burns down, they can put a mobile home in there for a year to live in while they rebuild the town, while they rebuild their house. And, um, from what I've heard and experienced, that's all the insurance company will pay for anyway. So it, it's having that one-year time limit on that for replacing your house is not anything unusual.
In a year, you ought to be able to get the house livable.
Right.
May not be done.
Right.
Yeah. Done enough, you can move in. And if you're living in a camper after eleven months, you'd want to live in a house. We think, yeah.
We didn't make any postchanges to this for this from the last time we talked about it, but.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? The only thing I noticed was different was the construction trails. If somebody's running a construction job, they got an onsite office on construction trail.
Yeah, that began.
Huh? That was the last one I did.
Yeah, I, I think we meant longer, but that's. But we talked about that. We made it longer last time, yeah.
Seen some projects I sent there for you.
Well, I know, I know why. You didn't, you were here. You didn't hear us talking about it.
I saw it online.
Oh, okay.
If you'd have been to the meeting, you'd have heard about it. Yeah, well, I couldn't know it was working. Okay, I know we have lots of people out there who want to hear, want to talk about this one, so. Members of public, whoever? Yep. What up, sir?
All right, thanks. Tom Flaherty, Sunrise Lane. When I heard a year, I can't believe I'm thinking this, but it sounds like that's not long enough. Sometimes I hear a lot of, I hear a lot of nightmares lately about people trying to get additions built or garages and it's, things are take, things go on a long time. So anyways, just a thought, a year and a half these days might, you know, might sound more realistic. But how do you enforce something like this? How do you know how long somebody's been in a trailer for sixteen days over, instead of fifteen? Is there a, is there a?
You know, for somebody that stays sixteen days instead of fifteen, that's not the problem. The problem is when they stay two months.
Or two years.
You know, it, it, I don't think anybody's, there's not gonna be any zoning police out there saying, "You've been there fifteen days, you gotta get out." But if somebody's been there three months, somebody might, and the butler might complain in, or somebody might notice it, or. And this gives the, the code enforcement the ability to do something about it.
So it's, it's pretty much a butters, bystanders, whatever would, would call it in. That's, that's the expectation.
We're, we're, the towns don't be running around looking for campers living in, no.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kinda hard to do unless you, unless you live right next to them.
But, but at the same token, we want to be reasonable with our timeframes here. You know, fifteen days out of thirty is, you look at what some other towns have done, and it's pretty, pretty lenient. It's, you know, it's a lot more than other towns. Some towns don't allow anything.
A couple of, or seven days.
Yeah. So we're being.
Okay.
Trying to be flexible.
And just to be clear, you said new construction, but you did, you did say if somebody's house burns down or a tree falls through it and they need to live in a camper or a trailer for five or six months, they can come in and get a variance or get a, they can get permission?
They can get a special exception, right, which is pretty easy to get. It's not like a variance.
Yeah, right. It's, it's an exception, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, thanks.
Anybody else? I knew both of you were gonna stand up. I didn't know which one was gonna go first.
Neil Kirk, Mount Dearborn Road. This is much improved from the version that we saw before, which was very convoluted. This is nice and clearly spelled out, so kudos for whoever did that. I guess it was you, Bruce. Two technical suggestions that are, that are designed to clarify things. Nineteen one eleven, second sentence, sorry, third sentence, allowed, it should be semicolon. And then any other use of these vehicles will require a special exception.
Instead of a comma, semicolon?
Semicolon instead of the comma.
Yeah. Okay.
And then in nineteen one eleven one, second line, less than one hundred, less than one hundred and twenty-one days. I assume you mean in it, and should insert, in a three hundred and sixty-five day period. You don't mean a hundred and sixty, twenty-one days over twenty years?
No.
No?
I mean.
It's in a year.
Yeah.
So in a, sixty-day, sixty-five day period, so it's not a calendar.
Like that same language you have above, in a.
Yes.
Three hundred and sixty-five day period.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now I have a question. In nineteen one eleven, when it was originally written, you had mobile homes. You don't have it now. Is there a reason for that and what's the consequence?
Mobile homes, people don't put in for temporary, like, use like this. They, we have a.
We don't have a definition of mobile homes. It's only of manufactured housing, which I think is the same thing.
The same, that's what they call it. It's referred to as manufactured.
Yeah. So that's covered by a different section of the code, of our ordinance, really.
So. If, if I'm reading this correctly, and just looking at this and not the other section to which you could refer, a person could take a manufactured home, put it in his field.
Well, they're gonna need a building permit to bring in a manufactured home, because they gotta mount it on a pad.
You have to.
Yes. It has to be tied down, septic system, well, the whole nine yards when you do that.
If they did that, then they could rent that out as an Airbnb?
This isn't addressing the Airbnb thing.
No, I understand that, but it, but they could, or they could live in it themselves.
Yep.
But they do need a building permit.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for the just suggestion about the three hundred and sixty-five days. That was an oversight, yeah. I said, thanks for the suggestion about the three hundred and sixty-five days.
Mr. Pratt.
And to buy these vehicles, of course. Or of these vehicles.
Ain't your name all written down and everything waiting for you? He's all set. Okay.
Well, I guess my, my question was, you said, married again, not in a campground for, for rent. So a trailer camper can be rented?
It can't be rented.
Is, is that what that means? It can't be rented?
Right, what says not for rent. It means it can't be rented.
Yeah, I was just confused in the wording. Said not in a campground and not for rent. So if it's in a campground.
Yeah, if it's, if it's not located in a campground.
Approved campground.
And not for rent. An approved campground and not for rent. So if it's.
So is that the only place where it can be rented is in a campground?
Yes.
I, I guess it doesn't really read to me that way. Says it while, if it's not, while I'm renting it, so it's okay, they can stay there. That's why I'm reading.
But then it's only for the fifteen days.
You're right. You gotta read that ten times.
I was trying to keep it as concise as possible because of.
You got, you got one out of it, boy. Don't worry.
The last time I tried this, it went down in flames.
I tend to agree. It is a word that's kinda weird right there, but.
I don't know a better way to do it.
I don't know what to do with it either, but.
And we had town council review this, too, and.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is for a petition received to change the zone of a property at one seventeen Abijah Bridge Road. Let me step down for a second. Oh, 'cause you're. Since my name's on the first, my neighbor's, my neighbor's property. Want me to say anything about it, like?
Yeah, could you describe what's going on with it? Yeah, I'm in.
One seventeen Abijah Bridge Road used to be two lots. I sold him this.
Yeah, yeah, hold on a second. Since you're recusing yourself, I'm gonna appoint Ray as a.
Ray?
Paul.
Okay.
Is a voting member.
Ray might be able to call in a vote. We don't know. Phone a friend. Anyway.
To replace you.
Petition is from a neighbor beside me, yeah, neighbor beside me, obviously. And he's bought, got two lots, one on the zone, the residential, one on the zone, well, at that time, one was on residential, one was on rural agriculture. He has since merged them, so now he has a lot with a split zone on it. So he wants to change it all to rural agriculture in a nutshell.
And for, for everybody else, this is the lot on Abijah Bridge Road with the, with the underground house in the field?
With the.
Yep.
Just before the, before the hill.
You know where I live, Paul?
Yeah.
You're gonna keep on going down the hill next to us.
Oh, okay.
There's none, there's none of the ground house there.
Well, maybe I didn't see it then. I'm not a hobbit, so I don't know.
It's not really underground, just looks underground.
Well, you say that, everybody knows what you're talking about. I, I quizzed Craig before the, the meeting because I didn't see the landowner signature here on the petition. That always makes me nervous when you see a petition that doesn't include the landowner himself. But I guess he's on page two that we didn't get.
Jackie Pratt, Winter Road. I, I walk that area all the time. It's, I guess I'm just a little confused as to why now, because I, it's been a farm for, I don't know, a couple of years now. Because I know they have sheep and stuff. And I remember Googling it because I, when I walked by one day, all of a sudden I noticed that they had a farm sign, a farm stand. And they were selling, I think, like honey and mushrooms and raspberries, things like that. So when I got home, I searched it because I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't know how it ended up being zoned, just straight residential. I don't know if it was the initial zoning that it.
But I mean, where the, so when I Googled it, you can sign up, it, it's, I don't know, it's a little confusing. But I mean, where the, so when I Googled it, that you can sign up, it, it's, I don't know, it's a little confusing. It seems like you can sign up to tour it or something on Instagram. So I'm just wondering, is it a, is it a business, is it a business as well, or? It, it is a farm, 'cause I did see Zula, I think it's called Zulip Farm. And I saw the little farm stand and everything, and it was just like I said, I walked by one day also, I'm like, oh, it's a farm, cute. And then I saw the sheep and everything, and then I saw all the plantings and stuff, and then, like I said, when I searched it, I'm like, oh, you can, it, it says like, come look, and you fill out a, a form to go.
Yeah, that's.
Look, so I.
Homeowners allowing people to do that, the landowner, I mean, that's.
Well, then, would, would that be a business, would they be zoned for business?
If it, if it's a farm, it's an agricultural thing, it would, we, they haven't been before us for anything.
Oh, that, I guess that's what I was just, I, I always thought it was a farm, I, it's just, I was surprised to see it on there, because I've only seen it to be a farm. Like I said, when I just started, I just walked that route and I go, and actually that's why I saw yours, 'cause I saw that big huge, I thought that was a snowmobile path, and I was getting ready to go on it, and I saw private property. So then I Googled it when I got home, because I was trying to see if there was a, a roundabout way. Like if it was a snowmobile trail, I was gonna skip over your property, I'm like, oh, is it?
Yeah, that's the owner's name.
Well, that's what I, I was like, oh, look, I mean, goes all the way up, but, anyway, so that, I was just curious, because it's, it's, I've been walking it for years and it's.
It doesn't matter. Right to farming where.
Right.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I didn't know, I, I.
So I mean, they're, they're.
It's a cute place, I.
They're asking the rezoner from residential, which is, you know, they could probably get, that's two acre zoning, not five acre zoning. So they could, actually, if they want to keep residential, they could cut that, it's five acres there, I think they could make two lots. But by zoning RA, and they're not gonna do that.
Well, it was just funny, 'cause when I walked by last week, all of a sudden the sign's down and the farm's down, 'cause I was going to get honey one day and all of a sudden everything's gone. I'm like, I, and then I found it on the hill, so I'm like, oh, did they have to take it down until they got approved and then they can put it back up? I didn't know. That's scary.
There's a distance raised to the landowner, and now they're giving up some of their development rights, because now the, a lot size is different for RA than R. So, but if they're willing to do it. And, it, um, so, yeah. Our, our function at the plane board on this one is, because this is a petition to amend the zoning map, we, we, we have the ability to put after the zoning article, we recommend this article, or we do not recommend this article. So that's what we're gonna vote on right now, is to, do we recommend this article or not?
Nice, I was, I was just curious, was there one that was gone?
Anybody else, any questions about? So what's the plane board's pleasure regarding this? Somebody wanna make a motion? Hmm?
Yeah, we did a couple of.
Well, this is a petition, then we have to vote to recommend or not recommend, don't we? We're not done, we, we, we're not done with the others, we're gonna do that next meeting. You wanna do this one in two weeks, or you want to?
So that's a petition, that's by petition, so it doesn't.
I mean, if we do it now, it's out of the way.
I move we recommend the petition.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, extensions, okay. Take that one off the agenda for next meeting, it's all done.
It's by petition, it's by petition, so it's.
We can't change anything, it's a petition, we can't, we can't change, we can't change, even if you see there's something wrong with it, we can't do anything. All we can say is, we like it or we don't. Yeah, but we only need to have one public hearing on a petition item. We don't need to have two, it's not like a zoning change. It was a, the, the, the leading language, the lead-in language, right, um.
I don't think I saw the, whatever you're talking about, I don't think I saw it. What the hell? Do you see it? He's losing it. I was wondering what day of the week it was. I was wondering what day of the week it was and what time of day it was.
Monday or Friday.
Like that. From Craig Francisco on a Thursday at eight thirty AM. I've been awake at that time. Okay, so we gotta back up a little bit, sorry folks, to the private road discussion. I won't throw it away. So we gotta change the definition to say, start with any way which provides access to three or more lots, and is not not a class one through six highway.
Highway or roadway?
Highway. State's RSAs talk about highways, they don't talk about roadways, sorry.
Ways, highways. Highways.
Yes. And then change seventeen point one point one to say, building permits may be issued on, for construction on private roads which are built to town standards and which are shown on a plan approved by the planning board. I don't remember this conversation at all. What are you talking about, what other one? Yeah, she's okay with everything else.
I, I'm just saying, it's, there, there will be a change for the next part of the string, 'cause the wording, the question is wanting to be different, but she was already done.
Okay.
But I wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Yes, I will change the definition. I'll change seventeen point one, and I'll change four point one, per my email dated twelve twenty-one twenty-three at eight thirty AM to Laura, 'cause I can go on my sent items and find it, write it all down right now. At the bottom. You will get my changes tomorrow morning. The rest was about the one I, yeah, yeah, yeah. And she was confused, and she's okay. The only thing else I have is minutes, December fourteenth. Oh, yes, I guess it's a closed public hearing, don't worry, on zoning numbers. Now we have minutes from December fourteenth, and I read them, and they're okay. Can I read them?
Yeah, it wasn't canceled, I saw it on TV.
Oh, you've saw, yeah, you, you, you saw it, you're all set.
So I watched it live on. Thursday Night Live, on YouTube.
Why, why is she, why are these highlights good?
Do it.
Couple minutes?
A minute.
Which is five hundred some square feet.
Page three, which, my printer acted up on that. Yeah, I'm not sure.
That's page three and four.
I don't know why I know it's highlighted. I saw that when I read them on my computer.
Make a motion. Go for it. Motion accepted, minutes as written, uh, was it December? Yeah, December fourteenth, twenty-three.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Other business?
I did, um, I was out in Monverne the other day. I took a ride by that, um, Second Chance Ranch Rescue, and it was very well kept, very neat looking. I felt better.
Well, you can see it from the road, right?
Oh, yeah, it's only fifty feet.
The road posted, it's rather off the road. Make a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm waiting, I'm drawing a map.